All right, got it. Okay. So, so briefly, you know, we don't have a quorum presence and that by New York State laws and town laws means that, you know, official business of some certain kinds can't be done. And basically, since the planning board is an advisory committee to the town board, I think those sort of restrictions don't apply all that well. You know, if we were the review board about to approve a site plan and didn't have quorum, that would be inappropriate. If we were the town board, who was, oh, actually, why is this? I turned the computer on, so Adam's having to look at me here. See, one of these two things will turn on the, there we go. Okay. Uh, we got, uh, there's a setup present there that I don't want. But I don't know how to change that. Oh, okay. So, okay, so, um, or town board, right? You're gonna pass a town law, you have to have a forum present, all kinds of, but anyway, anything we even decide, which is, okay, let's, we're done with this, is moving out of the town board. The town board is, it's just an advisory opinion to the town board. So I'm, you know, happy for us to proceed, even though that we don't have a forum. Because again, what we're trying to do is, is develop some, some policies. The act of decision-making power resides elsewhere. So, on we forward. Uh, no one's here for privilege of the floor. Um, so that brings us to approval of the minutes from a meeting that is now about six or seven weeks ago, was on September 3rd. And I do know that, that Barb looked at the minutes and said they were fine. I don't know if any of you guys had a chance to look at the minutes.
I have not.
Okay. Uh, Will, did you have a chance to look at the minutes?
I did, but I wasn't there.
Oh, that's right, you weren't even at that meeting. Okay, that's right, that, that makes it hard for you. Okay. All right. Um, so, uh, assuming that I hear no objection from Adam, because he didn't look at them. We're gonna consider those approved. If there is a problem, obviously, let me know and we'll fix them and reconsider them at the next meeting. But I think I wanna go ahead and get those, the, the approved version up on the web for folks to look at. All right. Um, and actually, I'm gonna close the door, because there's a, is that what's beeping? Yeah, it's a fire alarm alert panel. By the way, so Michelle, the fire, the fire alarm alert panel is beeping in the outer entryway here.
Oh, yeah.
So, you know, I don't, maybe it lost power, lost the battery. I, I don't think there's a fire, I think it's just a system, it's a system trouble alert.
Well, I found out that, um, Mark should be being notified right now, if that's the case. But let me text him, I'll text him.
So is this something on the, I don't think there's an emergency, just?
Well, it, it turns out that, uh, this thing goes directly to Pleasant Valley.
Ah. Okay, yeah, well, it's, it's more like system trouble as opposed to, I've detected a fire.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so, so they might be coming out to fix it. So, yeah, tell, let, let Mark know, thank you.
Oh, I, yeah, I, huh, Mark doesn't have an iPhone, and I do, and, um,
I'll, I'll.
You wanna text him, yeah, uh, because I don't have good cellphone coverage where I'm sitting right now, so.
Okay. No worries. So that, so then, the next item on the agenda is actually, um, the town board report from you. And in particular, I'm aware that, um, uh, was it Rebecca? I don't try to pronounce her last name, Minus, Minus. I have no interest.
Yeah, I'm not sure either.
I was in a meeting with her once, anyway, that she made a presentation to the town board, um, specifically regarding, um, some work she'd been doing for either the county or the, not sure who, regarding solar.
Oh. Well, mainly, the, the presentation was mainly about, uh, um, for the town of Caroline, it was mainly about, uh, the effects of, of, um, ways we can mitigate damage to Six Mile Creek, uh, for, you know, the, uh, city of Ithaca drinking water.
Oh, okay, okay, right, okay. Because other stuff that I, that crossed my desk had to do with, with solar, um, large-scale solar, and some recommendations for, for, again, land management and land preservation. But if that wasn't part of her presentation, give us an overview of what she did present, because I do have some materials from her on the other.
I mean, this, we were, we were handed this thing on solar, the solar energy systems, you know, as, as an extra handout. Uh, most of what, I mean, her presentation was essentially a critique of our zoning law in relation to, um, uh, uh, you know, maintaining Six Mile Creek as a viable, uh, water, you know, drinking water source. It, it was a little, um, some of us weren't, weren't particularly pleased, but, um, uh, in that some stuff that they said we should do, we felt that we had done. And, um, she was mainly concerned, um, with, uh, the rules regarding steep slopes and, uh, even wetlands, that she felt like, you know, we have, um, a thing in there that if, if all of your property is within a, a steep slope, that you can still develop part of it. And she felt that that, uh, shouldn't be that way. Um, and that there's some areas of large parcels of land that are all in a steep slope area, which actually, I really wonder if that's true, but, um, she felt like we should have a tiered system, that if a certain percentage of your land was, you know, um, I wasn't really sure what she wanted, uh. So I guess the, the shortest way to put it is mainly a critique of how well our zoning law, uh, fits in with, um, protecting the water quality of Six Mile Creek and preventing, like, erosion, you know, on stream beds and. I, I did point out at one point, um, so the person with it was Roxy, and I forget her last name, uh, who I think is from the city or town of Ithaca.
Yeah, I know the name.
Yeah, who said that there, in some cases, you know, landowners might have to, uh, put out money to make sure that their land is not eroding into Six Mile Creek, like, there would be landowner's share of, say, let's say, $5,000. And I said that that was, um, a, a difficult thing, I thought, for people to swallow, to protect, to have to pay money out to protect Ithaca's water quality.
I expect they were overwhelmed, overjoyed to hear that.
Well, it is something that we heard, I believe, when we were going through the zoning process. I do believe that people brought up that they thought, they wondered why we had so many regulations protecting the watershed, which was part of the reason for that, is to protect, uh, Ithaca's water quality. So I was basically passing on concerns that I had heard.
Well, so, so, yeah, as we were both, and Will, I don't know how much was going on when you were still on the zoning commission, but, um, you know, it is definitely a very reasonable area for cost sharing, if not support from, from the town and city of Ithaca, if, if that's really the desire, um, and.
Okay. No, I, I think there are some cost share opportunities, um. She didn't really go into that too much, it was, seriously, it was really a critique of the, uh, how well the zoning law, um, meets what the, their objectives. I think somebody on the board said it would have been helpful if they had sort of involved themselves, you know, presented some of these arguments while we were in the process of it. And they said that they felt that that might be, uh, you know, people would feel that Ithaca was trying to interfere with our, our zoning law and stuff, so.
Yeah, which I, 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 that, that's fair, but unless they could have maybe submitted something somewhere along the line, but, yeah, I can understand that concern.
Yeah, so I, I looked and, I mean, her presentation was supposed to be about 20 minutes, it turned out to be an hour and 20 minutes. Um, but that is all online. Uh, I, we didn't vote to do anything, you know, we didn't, we didn't propose any further action at this point. I think, I think, um, sort of, uh, fine-tuning the zoning law in this regard is now one of our priorities at this moment.
Okay, I was gonna ask for any other feedback from the town board discussion. Sounds like, at this point, no decision to do anything, maybe when the next first round of, of edits is done.
Right, we could, we can reconsider some of the stuff. I think the feeling was that they, we felt that, uh, they had missed some of the, uh, positive things that we had put in the zoning law to address some of these concerns. Um, and so myself, I, I, I would have to revisit what she said about the steep slopes, um, and what's in the zoning law, because I'm not 100% sure she had that correct, but.
Right.
You can also link to her report, which is quite long, uh, um. It's weird, you link to it at the announcement of the meeting. It says, um, I think it's in the announcement, that she's gonna, that's here. You click on that and that you get to her report, which is about 150 pages long, so. But it also refers to Danby, and one of her suggestions, I mean, just as, as.
I'm gonna pause you for one second, I realized, could you take a few notes? Not, I mean, okay, great, you are, thank you, great, thank you, thank you. Okay, go ahead, continue, not a lot on this, but it's funny.
One, one thing that she suggested, which we were a little bit confused about, was that Danby and Caroline should share a code officer. Um, so. I think her reasoning was to, so that maybe the decisions would be kind of in line with each other, or something, so.
I mean, and I can see that if neither town felt they had enough work for a full-time code officer, I mean, that would be the reason for, for sharing and to, to therefore relieve some of the cost burden and make sure someone had full employment.
Right, but we're, we're advertising for a full-time code officer, so. You know, we, we've, we've moved it to a full-time position, we don't, we feel that we do have enough work for a full-time code officer.
Okay.
So. Um, I guess what I took away from that is, um, when I mentioned that kind of down on your agenda, after, you know, the adult use, and the, uh, mobile home law is working on stormwater, the stormwater law, and they were very much in favor that that get worked on.
Okay, the storm, the stormwater laws, I know we talked about the, um, uh, flood zone law last time, and so it was.
I thought you said something about stormwater, well, they're concerned about stormwater protection.
Okay. Oh, and, and they, they're being, being the downstream neighbors, Roxy was voicing that?
Yes, yep.
Okay, well, that can go in the mix as well.
Okay.
All right. So, yeah, okay, great, thanks, and I, I, um, maybe I, I'm hoping, I was hoping to avoid listening to the whole hour and 20-minute thing, um, maybe I'll need to weigh in there, but I do know, um, so as, as you do, that when we were working on the zoning law, there were, it started in some ways much more protective of watershed slopes, et cetera, and basically, in acknowledgement of really where, sort of, we felt Caroline was at, um, that those weren't appropriate. Um, so it was a, a sort of a conscious decision to allow some building on, on steeper slopes than may, were originally in there and all of that, so. Whether they change in the next iteration, I, I don't know, but, um, there was some conscious decision-making there, uh, and, and quite a bit of deliberation, so.
Yeah, yep. So I think basically, their feeling was that we didn't go far enough in certain areas, that, uh, so. I think our feeling was, you know, we were trying to thread a, a needle of going, you know, far, but also understanding that property owners are really, you know, that concerned about, you know, use of their property, so.
Okay, yeah, makes, makes, I mean, you can understand maybe where they're coming from, you know, for their drinking water supply, but, but, yeah, there's a whole host of things to consider.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, great, thanks. Um. All right, so what I have for the, the agenda now is, um, so Guy Crowe sent some answers back to questions that, that we had wanted answers to. And so, next up, I was gonna, let's go through some of that a little bit, I mean, all of you have a copy of it, but just highlight a couple of things. Um, Guy also sent a couple of laws that he pulled off that were enacted more recently. Um, as it turns out, as he says in his other letter, that pretty much everything in Tompkins County is really old. Um, uh, the stuff in Lansing might have been from the 80s, ours is from the 90s, at any rate. So he did not think that those were great models to go to, uh, first off, so he sent a couple of the laws. Um, and then, based on, particularly on, on sort of our dilemma with First Amendment concerns, as I will get into more, really what to do going forward in terms of updating this law, um, with its interaction with the zoning law. And, uh, with that in mind, I will remind us that we are an advisory committee, and, uh, it may be that what we're gonna do, Michelle, is kick some of those to the town board and say, here's a few different things that, ways this could go. And we're seeking guidance from, you know, you guys admit there are a guide more as to which ones are, are more feasible, um, or likely to, to pass muster, so. So with that, um, I'm gonna pull out, um, Guy's letter here, um. So. We had a series of questions about, about adult use, law updates, interactions, First Amendment issues, et cetera. And, uh, he does indeed, uh, confirm what I think we sort of felt last time, that not only can you not say, oh, there can't be adult use in town, you can't set up a set of regulations such that you effectively ban it, you know, as we talked about, like, if it's in this one focused commercial district, but all the buffer distances are so large that you couldn't actually find a home for it, that would eventually, if someone tried to, to put something in, would fail, uh, on, uh, court challenge because of First Amendment concerns. Um, next big takeaway I took. So at the start of the existing adult use law, when this was enacted in the 90s, the town had established a committee that did a study, that, that, they did a study, they, they pulled together information from studies and presented to the town boards, they had a report. That's now, you know, 25-plus years old, and I basically asked him, can we rely on that still? And his sense was that some reference to that should still be in the law, but, um, it needs to be, it should be supplemented by some more modern references to some more modern studies. So he thought that that would be, um, important. Um, they don't have to be something done for town of Caroline, um, but they have to be something that would help show the negative impacts, um, you know, that are, it's somewhat more recently done. Another takeaway I have, oh, yes, so, so in Lansing's law, where they acknowledge at one point you can't have prostitution, they then have an escort agency, and there's some suggestion that it's, and escort agency is okay as long as they didn't do prostitution, but you, since you can't anyway, what's going on? And he basically thinks that that escort agency was, as he called it, a catch-all definition, uh, to cover other things that may not have been covered by the law. Um, and I, and one of the laws he sent us is escort agency is also defined, but in a way that I would think it would be legal. Because again, it says, you know, you wanna hire someone to be your companion for the night, there seems to be nothing wrong with that, so. Um, and, ah, and so, yes, and then he confirms exactly what we mentioned last time, that you can't effectively ban something by putting in restrictions that are, are too difficult, um, to do. He however, makes an important point in there, which is that you don't know that's the case until someone drops. Um, I don't think he's trying to be cute, but, you know, things can change or evolve, and so even if it looks like today, you couldn't place adult use in our focused commercial district, that isn't to say that all those become commercial properties 20 years from now, and then suddenly the residential buffer becomes a non-issue. So I don't know, um, anyway, I think that was an important, uh, comment that he made, that, uh, you never know the answer until an applicant actually applies and tries to get a use inserted into a district. And, yeah, he agreed that the old law was a little murky on how distance was measured, seeming to be two different things in two different sections of the law, he says, great, you know, uh, clear that up. And our last main question had to do with the penalty, um, because scaling up what had been the penalty in the law for a violation to today's numbers was $1,000. And he said, yeah, that's fine, and he went through arguments as to why, you know, the town can go basically up to twice amounts for a misdemeanor, as said in this other section of the penal code of the state law, um, but anything above that would be challengerable as being an unreasonable fine, so an Eighth Amendment issue. Um, so if we go to $1,000, that's fine. Uh, it also had each violation, each day is a new violation, and he said, yeah, you could probably get away with that, but he says, in practice, saying each week is a new violation is just as good, so. So he said, yeah, the basic issue, doubling of state fine levels is the maximum point of departure. Uh, you can use his word, an unclassified misdemeanor, unclassified misdemeanors don't have such maximums, because they're by definition, uh, oddball, unclassified things, so that, so that could happen, uh, but I think in the current case, probably $1,000 seems, for me. And what else did I pick out? Uh. He likes changing it from, 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 from adult use to adult entertainment. And, um, did comment that a couple of places it used the word, like, a public establishment, and he thinks that, uh, he warns us on that, because of course, a private club that is engaged in these activities probably is just as much a harm to the community as a public one. So he warns against being too much public institutions and just being careful in definitions, like you say, if things like predominantly this, predominantly that, do something to quantify, because otherwise it's too, too vague and can be a problem, because it's not enforceable. What's it mean that, you know, the private part of the business or some of the business is X versus Y? So that's my key takeaways from Guy's, uh, answers. And I don't know if anyone else looked at them recently enough that they wanna say anything, they caught their eye out of what he said. Okay. Yeah, for me, the key thing is, yeah, we have to be careful about not effectively banning it. We are fine with the fine level, um, and, uh, uh, I think that's gonna be our main issue, is, is how to, uh, figure things out for the district in which it's allowed. So that brings us to, oh, I guess we'll look at two laws that he sent, which I think we don't necessarily need to go, you know, if anything else you guys wanna say about these laws, what I noticed is that the one from Orchard Park was very slim and spare, not too many definitions. And so, uh, what I was really hoping, that one of these would have some updated, modern studies for us to crib from, but no such luck. The Williamson town has much more detailed definitions, so I think that we can discuss now which way we wanna go, the lighter or the heavier way. And, um, what I will point out is that in the Orchard Park law, which has, um, uh, again, there's this sparer law. The key thing is that they have a distance between adult uses, so that's the avoiding the too much cluttered in one area, the Skid Row effect, so they say 1,500 feet from each other. And then also, not within 1,500 feet of the boundary of a, uh, exclusively residential district. Um, that doesn't work for us, because we have no exclusive residential districts. Um, so that section of their, their laws is not really relevant to Caroline. Williamson, again, much more detailed set of definitions, um, a whole second signage that I think we would not need to worry about, but they allow it only in an industrial district. I have no idea how big their industrial district is, and, uh, their distance is about 500 feet from things like churches, et cetera, um, residences, uh, and 1,000 feet from another adult use. So those are my main takeaways from those. And I guess what I'd like to hear is, you know, what did you guys think of the definitions in either one of these two laws? Things that look good, things that look bad?
This is the first one we've seen signage, though.
Yes, I mean, I think, yeah, exactly, and so, you know, again, Caroline being sort of a light regulation area, we might, we might have some signage stuff in the zoning law, and, uh, now, we can think about it, but I mean, there's stuff in here about, like, the letters have to be, like, of the uniform color or something like that.
No flashing lights.
No flashing lights, and, you know, things that I might be in favor of, but I don't think it's necessarily keeping with the spirit of, of Caroline. Um, I think we already have sized area, uh, area limits that these are, are comparable to. I think ours might have been 64 square feet, which is like eight by eight, this is 75, um, and can't be more than 10 in one direction, um. Yeah, each letter is of a solid color, yeah, I don't know. So, yeah, I, that, that's a valid question, is, you know, do we want anything different for the signage of an adult use establishment than for other signs in the town?
I mean, it doesn't actually say, does it, doesn't actually say that there can't be anything explicit? Or illicit, I should say, or.
Yeah, well, it says, again, yeah, you can't have photographs, silhouettes, drawings, um, or pictorial representations.
Okay, so it does.
So that, that does, yeah, avoid the, uh, most of that sort of stuff, that's 515C.
Yeah, okay.
And that, but that would potentially be something to add, I mean, because again, our, our normal sign law just says you have whatever, and maybe, yes, you can restrict the content in a publicly viewable area, I think, I think that's a good point. Great, so let's add that.
So, excuse me, Bill?
Yeah.
So you're saying you would make that change to the zoning law, or just add it to this?
No, I think it'd be added to this, because, you know, you wouldn't wanna restrict any old business, you know, they wanna put a cupcake on their sign, because it's on cupcakes, that sounds great. But, you know, a nude silhouette of, of, of a male or female doesn't seem like the right thing to necessarily have, ever, you know, if, if you're trying to minimize the impacts of these kind of businesses, so. No, that would be, I think, very specific to this law.
Okay.
Um, Will, any thoughts on, on, you know, graphic representation and such signs?
No, I, you know, I have to admit, I'm not really, um, fully up on everything you sent out. I skimmed everything, but not really studied it.
Okay. All right. Well, what I would say, when the, the, you know, I'll tell you, you know, the definition of adult bookstore or adult video store goes on for a full page with, uh, part A, B, and five sub-points to B, I'd have to take a look at that carefully compared to what's in, um, some of the other laws, it just, again, feels like overkill. It does define somewhere that, you know, you can have up to, I can't remember what the percentage is of your, you know, business sales or something are in, um, you know, the, you know, it has to be above some threshold before you're considered an, an adult establishment. And I, I, you know, I thought that was a reasonable way to define it, can move the number now.
Um, so that same thing in a different law about massage as well, isn't it?
I do never call it. So I think it's probably, this, these are gonna be useful to, to, to compare to, again, what we've got and what a couple of the ones in the town, uh, other towns have, just to make sure we haven't missed something, but, um, I'm sensing that probably going through them one by one tonight is not gonna be the best use of our time. So, uh, I at least will take a little look at them, hopefully you guys will too, and we'll get Barb, you know, in on it as well. The, yeah, again, not, not offhand skimming through and finding the, the definition of how much percent, um. It's the principal business purposes definition, maybe it's under that. No. Okay, well, we'll, we'll skip that for now. All right, so the main thing I did wanna talk about now, um, this is the main goal for tonight, is to think a bit about ways forward. It was sort of like wandering around in this, that I thought was gonna be a, a real quick, you know, thing, or in a meeting or two, we just put in some new definitions, update a couple of things, and we'd be done. Turns out, we've gone into a big can of worms with the First Amendment and other restrictions. So I sent out a couple of thoughts. So here's now a summary of my three thoughts of the three ways we could go. One, leave things as they are, as the zoning law says, it's only allowed in the focused commercial district, and the existing law has these thousand-foot buffer distances from residential properties, schools, churches, et cetera. Um, and acknowledge, we've come from the town board, that effectively bans the use in this town as the zone is currently configured. And so if someone wants to do this tomorrow, um, the town would lose, uh, and the, and the business could go in anyway. What I don't know is the risk of that, that is, does that mean they could go anywhere in the town? That is, that these, the zoning would be, uh, ignored? Or does it mean that, um, it would still go in the focused commercial district, because the zoning says that, but they'd be allowed to locate closer? Um, it would still go in the focused commercial district because the zoning says that, but they'd be allowed to locate closer to something. And that's essentially a Guy Crowe question. And so, you know, the town board could explore that with Guy as to how much risk is there? To just simply update our definitions, our uh, update our fees. Make things a bit more precise and leave it at that. Um, so that's option one.
What would happen if someone did apply for one right now? Would that's, would it be rejected and they would have to? What would they have to sue or would they try to get variance or sell it or?
So um, I don't think it would be a variance since the. Well, it would be interesting if they could get, okay, so 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 the variance would be to the zoning would have to be that. It'd be a use variance saying this is not an allowed, you know, I can't go to the focus commercial district because I literally can't. Abide by the town law that says what I have to do. Therefore, I need a variance to locate in a different district of town. My use isn't allowed there, but I'm asking for a variance on the allowed uses. So that that'd be one avenue is to get a a variance on the use in some other district.
We don't, that's not a very good way to leave it because. That's just giving the problem to some other.
Well, and and you don't want, essentially, as as when we're setting the zoning law with our our. Consultant says, you know, if you're sort of expecting problems being handled by variances, then you aren't doing your zoning right. You're trying to set up most things good. So 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 I think that the other option is that they, and and let's say maybe their variance is turned down. I think that they could um. I don't know if this is the right thing for for an article. Whatever, two thirty-nine proceeding or article, I can't remember the number, but there's a way to essentially sue for relief from a town's. Law or whatever. Or because this is a uh, a US constitutional issue, I don't know if there'd be a suit in a federal court. Striking down either the law or the zoning as unconstitutional. So those are the the, I don't know, to be honest, to tell you, that those are the things that I can, how I can see, but I was sort of assuming someone would sue in a court of law. Uh, to say on First Amendment grounds, they have to let me locate here. But you were right, they could get a variance.
But that would, would that throw, that would throw out the whole zoning law, would it?
Um, I assume not, but those again, those are the questions, so the point would be the town board could explore those issues with with Guy Crowe. Or they could say, go ahead and talk to Guy about that. So that's option one, has those, you know, we're setting ourselves up for a known conflict. Probably, but we don't know that because someone may never want to put an adult use here, or by the time it happens. That district has been made larger for some other reason or, you know, who knows?
Okay.
Option two. Leave it in the focused commercial district, which is where the zoning commission said that seemed to be the regional place. In some way that protects the most of the town because the focus commercial district is this tiny little area compared to Caroline. But then the allowed distances would have to be made smaller so that it would actually be feasible to. Um, locate such an establishment. And my concern with those are twofold. Now, one is the arbitrariness. Are we just? Picking some number? How how do we pick that number? I mean, now now we're becoming untethered from. You know, we'd have to really then start to dig 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 into studies to say, okay. What do they say? Is your thousand feet really important or is there a lot of mushiness or is two hundred feet okay? And because I think the distance had to be something like two or three hundred feet. In order to really make this work. Um, uh, I don't think I still saw that map I did, but you know, a thousand feet. Coming in from either those properties tend to be about two thousand feet wide. So, you know, coming from each side, it wipes out the whole thing. So, um. Anyway. Uh, and then the the, so so bad, and the others is if we do make them smaller, then we are indeed allowing an adult use. Close to. To say a residence.
No.
Uh, or a church, because there's a church in that district. Um, where there are going to be children and regional people don't want this sort of thing. Um, and so in some sense, that's protective of more of the town, but but less protective of the individuals who happen to live. In the focused commercial district. So there's that. Third option. Let's say we want to keep those buffer distances. Well, we can't. Support that in the focused commercial district, so we have to add some districts in which those those distances. Don't preclude. Locating such an establishment. And I think that though, you know, my suggestion would be the um. Agricultural rural district, because any of the hamlet districts run into the same issue. Most of them are small properties, lots of residences. It's hard to see how you get far enough away from a residence to to locate an adult establishment. That feels. Wrong because the zoning commission already restricted this nice little area. Now I'm going to let expose the whole town to this?
And only for one type of business?
Right. On the other, well, there are other businesses allowed. So it's like we're saying, this is this is now an additional allowed business in that district. So that that bothers me less than the fact that. You know. What's your neighbor going to think? What? You're you're going to let that come out here now? But at the same time, it allows us to keep a large buffer distance between such a business. And important things like residential properties. So those are three. Things I can imagine doing. I don't know if anybody else thought of anything else.
Um, what were? I know we had, you saw the signage, but what most of the other. Uh, I would say aspects of how the property had to look, because you can't see anything from from other properties, right? You can't see in the windows.
Yeah, you want to be, yeah, you want to obviously see some naked dancers that happen to be passing by the street.
I mean, for for most properties in Caroline, that this would even make, that this would even work. In a different district with the same buffers. It's almost no, you wouldn't be able to see almost anything. Or.
Right, right, there's a thousand people.
Right, I mean. I think we're also in in the way of. Trying to keep the buffers, I think we'll protect. Neighbors and property better because. It's, you're not really going to know it's there unless you know it's there. It's not going to be seen, it's not going to be heard or. Any other thing. It would just be something that is known there. I don't know, I feel like.
They might have their sign on the road, of course, you know.
A sign on the road, but it, we know that the sign isn't going to be something that's. Too risque either. I feel I feel like that would be more important than. In my opinion, that'd be more important than low, small, shrinking the buffers and keeping it on one little section. I think we could, in other words, we could hide it better in our town. If we if we allowed this.
Will, your thoughts? And any of these three ways?
No, I'd have to give it more thought. Um. It's not really clear. Um. What the um. Dangers are. But, you know, just as, uh, just thinking about who lives where and. Um, the areas where there's big distances. Um, I'd be thinking, oh, there's a lot of women who live alone out. Out in our rural areas and we don't have a police force and. I think people would feel. Um. Less protected. Off the beaten path. But those are just thoughts off off the top of my head. I don't know if. You know, giving that more thought or talking to people if. You would agree that that would be. Um, a consequence or not. You know, I. In driving around the county, um. The only place I've ever noticed. Um, were those Kula dancers. Um, I think they were out on um, the way to um. Burdette in Watkins Glen.
Right.
There was a place and. It just looked like a bar. And there weren't a lot of. Homes nearby, but it it's a main road. It's not. You know, Caroline just doesn't have that many main roads to begin with. And our commuting roads. Um. They're really only. Busy during commuting times. For the most part.
So you're thinking that means it'd be less likely that. You know, something like. The Kuma Chalmers or whatever that was would be located in Caroline? I'm I'm not fully following the implication of what you're saying.
Well, I think what I'm thinking is establishments like that are. Um. Well, first of all, everything's out on the internet now, so I don't even know if businesses. Like that are sprouting up or if they're mostly shutting down, but. The owner of the Kula dancer died. There was an obit. And it hasn't opened up again, as far as I know, not that I um. Follow things, but you know, I drive to Watkins once in a while. Um, but if if you have an establishment like that, we have no. No police force. Um. I don't, I don't know what. Type of activity. Um, overflows or. What type of activity other than traffic? Would be there. But if there is additional activity, you'd want it someplace near a main road, not out in the middle of nowhere. I mean. It just, I find that sort of contradictory to. Uh, the long distances, because when you have those long distances, you're sort of more vulnerable. Even though, you know, for the most part, people feel safe in our area.
Okay, I think I think I found you. So, I mean, I think that um. There was, so in Groton, I can't remember when this was. Ten, twenty years ago, I don't know, someone. Opened up such an establishment in Groton, right in like little, not a quasi village. Area almost, not in the village of Groton, but like. Uh, I can't remember the name, where it is now exactly. It was a restaurant at one time, and then for a while it reopened as a. Exotic dancer place, and it was quite the hullabaloo. Um. But I think that went out of business and I'm with you, Will. I don't know how many places are, you know, if they're viable anymore um, or not. So. To some extent, right, you know. How much? Do we really want to get bad out of shape or something that might never happen? Uh, and maybe is a dying. Thing anyway. Um. But uh. Uh, so I I hear you, I mean, I think that most of the laws, the rationale for them is predicated on the fact that. Again, usually in a more concentrated urban environment. That there is an increase in crime in the vicinity of such places. Um, you know, yeah, not necessarily, again, a statistical. Increase, so not like every single one creates more crime, but I believe that, you know, just because the. Kind of the go there, the the access to alcohol, um, whatever. Uh, so that's one of it, uh, part of it. And then there is a depression of property values. On nearby properties because it's an establishment. And so those are the two. Main things I often saw reference to, um, is protection of property values and and protection from from crime. So that's the rationale for for the distance. Often, but again, I don't know what it means that the the amount of distance should be.
But if we put it into the commercial zone. Then we're going to have to lower the distances and there are houses. And other things there that they shouldn't be next to. So. Even if we keep it over there, it's still going to be doing the same thing. As it would be out of the country, you'd just be closer.
Um, and and, you know, fewer people are potentially exposed in the sense that. You know, there's only eight houses or ten houses in that district. Right, but I agree, you know, but. Probably only one is going to appear in Caroline anyway, right? You know, so it's not like. So I guess there's fewer houses potentially exposed as in vulnerable to to exposure, but. In practice, there's only going to be a two or three neighboring property anyway, and so.
And I think we're all thinking of a a strip club of some type, whereas it is. It could be a bookstore or a video store, and that may not. Cause that type of. You know. Possibility of a crime or the type of people, I I don't really know, but. If there's a whole lot of a list of different things that could be the the option here and. I think we're all kind of thinking that one is going to be the one that we. It would be the thing that would come up, which is, I believe it would be because. That's the only one that round. I think there is an adult bookstore downtown. Too, but. Yeah, that's all boarded up, well boarded up so you can't see in it.
Right, right. For for probably the same, I'm sure I'm sure it has the same rules. You can't see anything on the outside, but and. And I don't know how, yeah. What the risk is like these days, I guess, because so much is probably available on the internet and the the physical bookstores.
It might need to be closed. I really don't know.
Well, wouldn't the uh, Ithaca police have some insight?
You know, as as to why, so whether it's all, uh, the such businesses are thrive, I don't know, what insight do you want?
Whether um. They they find themselves called to those places or that there's consequences or are they mostly? It, I mean, our society has changed so much in the last ten years with respect to. Um, these sort of things that. I think the police would probably have more um. Perspective than the sociologists at. This point, because, you know, they would know if they get called out or not.
I mean, the only one I think of in in around Ithaca would be that adult bookstore, so I can't imagine that causing. Really any crime. If we had a.
My guess is.
Club or gentleman's club, there would probably be some crime, but. I don't know of any.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I I, you know, the the town, the city of Ithaca is so different. From locating such a thing out here. I don't know if. How it's like apples and oranges, maybe. I mean, it's a good, it's a good point. But I don't know, um, they might be able to tell us about trend, but I also agree that there's probably enough other crime going on in the commons area. That trying to. Pickpoint whether it's it's been impacted by that bookstore, which has been there for a long time. I think it was here when I came as a student. Uh, as far as I know, um. So that may not be in the end all that helpful. Okay, well, again, I think we'll we'll. I want to have Barb's input too, but I think. Well, I'm leading guys to see what you guys. Again, so attention, you guys, I mean, saying, you know, here, what we see and hear. Question of pluses of opening for a little more versus less to the town. Which way do you guys want us to go? We have three different laws for you to consider. Um, and some of it. Some policy questions that may. Input from Guy, uh. And so. The risk of not. Right, right, for example, you know, what exposure do I give the town? If something that did try to come. And we simply left everything in this. Highly prohibited area. Uh, or not, so. Um. So that's my. We'll revisit it next. We might need some further from you guys. Uh. That as to to um. Is, we could spend a lot of time coming up with something and then. Being to your taste. Um. So, so I. What I've worked my way around. Taken all month. What should we do? What should we do? And I'm. That we, that's not really.
Well. Uh, I almost hate to say this, but I actually. Do know someone. Who has worked in an adult. Bookstore, I guess you would call it. In the last ten years. I can try to contact that person and. Just, just see what they have to say if there's.
Okay. I mean, you know.
I can't believe I'm telling you this, but, I mean. I know a lot of people.
If the person feels the industry. Way out anyway, uh. You know, or not, or the real bad rap that really isn't. Or, you know, whatever, but, you know, I think. Go with with some. Cool, like you say, sociological. Uh, uh, physical question is, is in terms of town. What the town does, it probably needs to up. Some of the references there, so. You know, I I wouldn't have to go about such a. Um, got punted on it as well. I know I did take a quick look. Two months ago on the internet is sort of, you know, recommended like separation just. I got nothing. I got squat. Oh, so it is more exists, it's in the. Uh, literature, social literature. In the town of Ithaca might be. I don't know if they've updated their laws. But they've got the resources that I guess. I think I had in planning, you know, and they're like, oh, planning office. Said some kind of study to the town. And I don't know um, if, please, if they had done that more.
I'm I'm, this, like, first. There's never, my knowledge has never been any. Old use business here. I love for fact, but.
Yeah, the midnight sun probably. I bet they had X-rated victims, but I don't know, um, I just. Never went there, but it wasn't a part of their business. They were a good area. My part of their business, they were a good area.
Most of what were laws, especially any good law, is that have a totally different graphic and, and density than what we have. And again, very good law, because they don't really. And I just don't, I don't, a very. If it ever did come, that's the big question, if it came up, the consequences, because if it was something, the whole zoning laws could put. And that almost seems like some purpose, but if it was just like, it's a quick, easy thing. Then I, this is maybe, not, not wasting, making a mountain out of a molehill.
I, I, I. Alright, so here, I will then propose. I will, um, a note, uh, to the town board that we'll discuss next. Enough in advance of our next meeting, you can look at it. Um, that are thoughts and. Um, unless someone else wants to leave, try to, to take a look, if town of Ithaca will cut. Again, the, the, whether it's more or not, that might be a lead, I go beyond that because I just don't have time for that. I also was motivated to try to find the literature on, you know, that's in the last, per se. Topic of, of, you know, entertainment business and, uh, separation from. Just like churches, drugs, schools, that would be great. You know, that, easy ask. Um, and then at the next meeting, discuss, or, um. You guys, what do you guys think of that note, do it, and maybe time to leave this law, this other stuff for. These are attention to. So, meeting, the, the day before Thanksgiving, which I know is not a good day. Feel about meeting the week before. Sorry, saying. No, it should be, yeah, let's see, what I, I have my notes here, sorry, at least. Twenty-eighth is Thanksgiving, so the twenty-seventh is the Wednesday, would be the, the, the previous or any other day that week. Oh, no, I don't have the town calendar up, if someone could check whether there's other week.
Well, the town board would be the sixth and the twentieth.
No, okay, the twenty, so, okay, so we would have to shift to the nineteenth, that's open, is there anything?
Uh, I'd have to check, there's a, there's a review board meeting sometime in November, but I forget when.
Alright, um.
You have to, I'd have to go to a different website, um.
I'm gonna do this, okay, I can't, I'm recording, okay, great, so I can go and look at.
I can look on my phone.
Okay, or I think, I think I made, let's see. Next month. And how do I keep going? Okay, so, twentieth, uh, yeah, it said the ag, in the fourteenth. The, yeah, getting, I don't see, the review board twelve, I guess, so yeah, it looks like the nineteen. If you guys are available on the ninth. I'm available. Um, okay, let me get, so we're not recording that. Okay, so the, the, that Tuesday, the nineteenth work for you?
Yep.
Okay, and, Michelle, you, you? Okay. Okay, well, we'll hope it works for, and we'll plan on that then. Unless anyone else has anything else to discuss. Okay, well, we'll do, and, um. Yeah, probably be enough, you know, November's busy between the election, rushing Thanksgiving debacle. I'm starting to do next meeting. Sounds good?